Yes, I will start. Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Carter is present, Alder Abbas.
Present.
Alder is present, Alder Harrington McKinney? Was she, was that her?
No, that's my daughter, sorry. She was saying present in the back.
Oh.
That's too cute.
Alder Skidmore. Present. Alder Skidmore is present. Alder Hennick?
See, I'll hit unmute all again. Okay, everyone's unmuted.
Okay. Alder Cheney?
Here.
Alder Cheney is present. Alder Campbell?
Here.
Alder Campbell is present. Alder Bedar?
Present.
Alder Bedar is present. So we're just missing Alder Hennick and Alder Harrington McKinney. We have four.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Would you like me?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yep. Okay, I'm gonna unmute, or excuse me, mute all quick. Okay. All right, uh, welcome to our virtual CCEC meeting. Members of the CCEC and city staff, if you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link in your original email. Members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you're speaking. The chair and staff are responsible for muting and unmuting committee members. Please use the raise hand function to indicate you wish to speak or ask questions. This includes staff who are being asked a question. The chair will do their best to call in committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Voting will be considered unanimous, however, if you object to unanimous vote, please use the raise hand feature when the chair asks for objections and a roll call will be taken. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it via email to allalders@cityofmadison.com. President Carter, the floor is yours.
Thank you. We'll have the approval of the minutes. Did anybody have any corrections, subtractions, et cetera, to the minutes from April 16th? And the minutes from April 21? If not, if I can get a motion, I don't see any hands. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Hold on. While I'm not... I'm trying to unmute you.
Yes, I am unmuted. Motion to...
Okay, great.
Motion to approve minutes of April 16 and 21.
Thank you. And Alder... Kimball, second. It's been moved improperly, second, all in favor. Guys, don't see a unanimous, no any objections. I don't see anyone except, we will record that as a unanimous vote. Thank you. And next up is a discussion with Mayor Rose Conley. And can we unmute, unmute her? You're unmuted, Mayor.
Thank you, President Carter. And hello, everyone. I have a few things to go over. I'll try not to take too much time, but there's a lot of information to share. And so on the first item, the reopening and recovery plans for the city, there's a few things that I just want to go over and make sure that you have seen. First of all, I hope you have all had a chance to look at the Forward Dane Plan that Public Health released, and that covers the data that they are using to guide their decision making, and then the matrix of phases of reopening, based on that data. All of that then has specific guidance behind it that they'll be sharing with different types of organizations. And it's, I think, it represents a tremendous amount of work by our Public Health Department and is quite well done, and I hope that you all take the time to become familiar with it. We are using that internally as well to help guide the city's reopening, among other things. And so I'll talk a little bit about that process. But first, because there have been questions in the past, I wanted to just talk a little bit about how we've been redeploying staff as part of our response to COVID-19 and then reopening and recovery. So just as a refresher, we did via the planning section of the EOC define a series of service types in the city. So essential services, work that can be performed remotely, field services that can continue because the work is done largely alone, and then essential field services that have to continue with proper protection, and then non-essential services that would place employees at risk if they continued. So I won't run through all of these categories, but I'm certainly happy to answer questions about them. I think the thing that I wanted to report to you is in the category of folks that were available for redeployment because either their function was shut down, like Manona Terrace, or they were not able to do their regular job for safety reasons. It's about 128 people. And we have been working on redeploying those in various ways over the weeks and months now. So you've heard this example before, but we had about 100 staff from agencies, including library, Manona Terrace Parks, and others that were redeployed to the Clerk's Office over the election. We've had maintenance staff from Manona Terrace that are redeployed into engineering divisions. Our parking enforcement officers have been reassigned to parks to assist parks rangers, and more. So this is something that the EOC is tracking on a weekly basis. And anyway, there had been a question about it, so I wanted to make sure that I shared some of that information. Then I want to just touch on two groups at the staff level that are going forward with planning, and one is the Internal Recovery Task Force, and this is the, a group out of, again, the planning section of the EOC that is focused on how and when the city reopens our own services. And so they are focused on four things. Preparing physical spaces for safe interaction, preparing for staff to return to their offices, preparing for staff to expand work in the field, including private buildings like licensed establishments or home inspections, and also outside, and then preparing to reopen or expand services to the public. So the, the group is working on assessing the needs, particularly the physical needs and the, the supply needs of different departments as they go into this planning process. And they are also working on guidance for department heads who will ultimately be in charge of the reopening process. So it's a, it's a very slow and steady process. We're not rushing into anything. We're trying to support department heads in, in making plans that take into account the Forward Dane framework, and of course, the best science and guidance from Public Health. The ultimate goal, of course, being keeping staff and the public safe while, you know, safely and prudently reopening services to the public. So expect to see much more on this going forward, but I just wanted you to know that those conversations were happening, those plans were taking place, and that, you know, we're, we are trying to address the concerns from really all sides, I have to say. We, so from the public, we're hearing, you know, please open sooner. From the public, we're hearing, thank you for not opening. From the, our staff, we're hearing, I'm eager to get back to work. And from our staff, we're hearing, I don't feel safe coming back to the office or back to my regular work or whatever it is. And so we're trying to really balance all of that and make sure that everybody's in a position where they can feel safe and supported. But I just wanted to report to you that that work is happening. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is the, the parallel structure to the EOC for, for funding and recovery. And this is one of the PDFs that I asked council staff to send out, that has the flowchart on it. And let me see if I can share that with you, just so we have it all in front of us.
Are you seeing the share screen?
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right, so... There we go. So this is, you'll notice this is very similar to the EOC structure, and in fact, we've got the EOC structure on here. Of course, Mayor's Office Council at the top. You know, the EOC is continuing, but I think as your last report from Chief Davis indicated is going down to once-a-week meetings. What's, and so then the JIC, which will continue in some form, but eventually be replaced with more of a communications hub, and then the research team are also carrying forward. But this portion here, the Funding and Recovery Team, is the new structure. And so it'll have a very similar structure to the EOC where we have a steering team that's made up of the heads of each of these boxes that will meet regularly, certainly once a week going forward. We'll see if we need to meet more frequently than that. And then each of these groups has a team of people assigned, and as they sort of define their work out, they will potentially have subgroups as well if they need them. But this is trying to, to cover all of the things that we think we need to take into account as we think about the broader recovery of the city. So some of these are probably obvious, certainly housing, transportation. The Funding Team is, has been working for some weeks now already, and they are really looking at the sources of federal money and state money, but also any other sources that the city can apply for, you know, private grants, whatever, to help sustain us or to meet the needs of the community. Government Services Team will be focused on standing up government functions, but also trying to capture some of the lessons of this experience. In particular, you know, just one example is we've really nailed teleworking now, and so how do we carry that forward, and to what extent do we allow people to continue to telework even when we're not in the middle of a pandemic anymore? And what have we learned from that? And how can we incorporate that into our sort of day-to-day going forward? The Human Services Team is focused on our community services, our vulnerable populations, so homeless, childcare, senior issues, et cetera. And then the Economy and Culture Team is, is focused on certainly the business sector, but also the cultural sector, and thinking about our workforce and our economy going forward. So each of these is huge topics, and, you know, there'll, there'll be large conversations, but also really focused on how we can move some things into action as quickly as possible to support our community. So that's... Wanted to just share that with you. And then, let me see. All right, so just a few things on that structure. That we are planning on, on having that structure with us for a good long time. Certainly, I would say into next year and possibly all the way through the end of next year. Just in thinking about the, the duration of the economic impact, we'll probably need some form of attention to that, those issues for that long. It is built off of a number of existing teams already, so it's not, we're not creating an entirely new level of work. We're repurposing a bunch of internal teams. And, you know, one of the stated goals is to have clear roles and responsibilities. Another is to be transparent and responsive to policymakers. And a third is to have a res j lens embedded in the work, so each of the teams will have a res j lead on them. And then a fourth is to create data systems that will help us track problems, respond to them, and then measure the efficiency of our response. So we're trying to incorporate the city's shared values into this structure as best as possible. So I think the, the three topics I have to talk about are disparate enough that maybe I'll pause there and see if there are any questions on this part.
I have a quick question. Under the, um... The federal and state efforts, I know that the state is looking at providing some funding. Also, came out this week, the federal government continues to talk about additional funding. On your organizational chart is the, I didn't write it down. Which group is going to be really looking at connecting to that funding as it comes down the pike as of now is obviously just being talked about?
Yep, so that'll be the, the Funding Coordination Team. And that's, you know, led by finance, but we'll have other folks on it as well, and and they will be, I mean, there, there are more of us doing this work, but they will be primarily monitoring what funding is available from the state and federal government, not just for us, but also for the community, and so that we can help spread the word and and make sure people can access the funds that are available to them. And they will be exploring other sources of funding as well to, so if there are, for example, today, Greg Michaels from the library raised that there are some grants out there that libraries can apply for, and that he wants to pursue. And so, right, there'll, there'll be that kind of thing where we, if there is a grant opportunity for a department, that team would support them in applying and then administering that grant if they get it.
Okay. Then one more thing. With the city staff coming back in, is there a plan to really go through and sanitize the offices and buildings? I didn't see that on here.
Yeah, so that's, that's a, sort of a separate function under the operations box of the EOC. So that's part of what the Internal Recovery Task Force is working on, is all of the things that we need to do before we can safely bring people back.
Okay.
And so, yes, cleaning, but not just the one-time cleaning, a cleaning schedule is part of it, supplies is part of it. In some cases, we'll need to build clear barriers. You know, in other cases, we'll probably need to not bring everybody back at once. So they're, they're working through for all of the public-facing functions, what supplies and, and equipment are needed, and then they'll work through also, each department will have to figure out with their support, how many people who are teleworking should come back, want to come back, are willing to keep working from home, you know? And that's going to vary, I think, department by department.
That's true. Alder Kimball?
Yeah, thanks. How do you see these teams integrating with our formal policymaking structure of boards, commissions, and committees and the council?
So as with the EOC, you know, the council sort of oversees and I think will interface with, with all of these, but each of the teams has at least a primary committee and often more than one committee that they would be working with. So, you know, for example, the, the Funding Coordination Team would work primarily with the Finance Committee, and Government Services would work primarily with CCEC. I don't have them all memorized, but you get the idea. Each, each of those boxes has a primary committee and in some cases, two or three secondary committees that they would be expected to be in touch with, to make sure the committee knows, gets, gets updates on their work and has a chance to comment.
So you would see each of those committees having sort of regular time to discuss with those teams on their agendas?
I think it will be up to the committees what kind of structure they want. But yes, I would say that staff would, would alert them to the work of the, these teams, and then defer to the committees how often they want to hear about it or in what format.
Also, as you were showing us that, I was reminded of the Performance Excellence Teams that we had, and that we had Alder representation, representation on each one of them, and I'm wondering how we could make that happen for these.
I'd have to go back and talk with the staff who put this together. I don't know if they considered that or not, but I, I, it's not a conversation we've had.
Okay, I appreciate it.
But there is, they did look, and there is some overlap with the Performance Excellence Teams, particularly in the Government Services Team, that's structured around the Performance Excellence Leadership Group. So as you will remember, we were already transitioning the Performance Excellence Structure into the Mayor's Management Team. And so this is, I think, probably the next iteration of that to be more focused on recovery.
Okay, minus the participation of Alders. So I guess that's my concern is, can we bring that back?
Noted.
Alder Abbas?
Thank you. I do not have a question, just a one small comment. While the EOC and the city is looking into cleaning supply and how they will keep it clean, especially when we open for the in-person meetings, one thought is in my mind, which we are also discussing in our office as well, is looking at the building design as a touch-free, and how we can, especially for those committees or rooms where there's a lot of, like Finance Committee Room Meeting and other where there's a lot of people come, how we can create that touch-free doors and have less and less opportunity to touch the door. So if that's something EOC or city staff can look into, that, that will be good.
Yep, the Operations Section of the EOC is already looking into that.
Thanks.
All right. Are there any other questions? Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
I think Alder Hennick has a question.
Oh, I see him, yep. Go ahead, Alder.
Oh, he's muted again. There you go.
Am I muted again? All right. So as far as contact, thank you. So as far as contact information goes for any of these different divisions or departments, one thing that I've had a hard time with is getting ahold of staff on the phone during this time. And I know when people are working at homes and things like that, being able to forward phones isn't always happening, but do you know, is there a good way, when you're looking at this layout plan, and how we'd be able to get in contact with one of those divisions or departments, or is that, are we planning on continuing the kind of practice of always going through Quazy on that? It would, it would make sense to me to at least see some names of who's in some of those, just to get an idea for us in our heads of how this is kind of playing out.
Yep, so I think for the moment, through Quazy is the best way, and only because we haven't alerted all of the staff who will be in all of these boxes, that they will be in these boxes. So we'd like to give them the heads up first before we start sharing their names far and wide, and make sure that that's going to work for everybody. But after that, I think we can, at a minimum, give a contact point for each of the boxes.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And I, I hear you on the phone. It's, our email traffic has gone up significantly, I think, because we're not all by our phones anymore.
Yep. Email, but some also don't. I tend to be a phone person, so I like to call people, and switching over has been interesting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Mayor. It was fascinating.
So that's, that's one of three, sorry. So just quickly, I, you have the handout on elections. I, I won't read it to you, but I want you to know that we are having these conversations, because I know a number of you have reached out both to my office and to the Clerk's Office with ideas. So this is, the handout that, that you received is a summary of a conversation between my office and the Clerk's Office. It's preliminary for sure. They haven't even finished finalizing the April election and doing their full analysis yet, and so there'll be more to come after that. But we wanted you to get a sense of the directions that the conversation is going. And in particular, I know that there's been a lot of conversation about just mailing out absentee ballots, or mailing absentee ballot request forms. And it, while I think that, that we probably will want to do some significant push to get people to sign up for absentee ballots, I just want to alert you that there is racial disparities in both the usage, the return, and the acceptance of absentee ballots. And so they are not actually always the best tool for us. And that's one of the things that the Clerk's Office is very much focused on, is doing a res j analysis around this and making sure that we really are providing equal access to voting to all of our community. And so that's probably the highlight for me from this, but there's going to be a lot more work that we need to do here. And, you know, so stay tuned. The Clerk's Office, I think, will have a lot more to say about this as they are able to work through their reconciliation, their analysis, their res j analysis, and more. But I know it's a topic that's of, of great concern to a number of us, so I wanted to make sure that I gave you as much as information as I could at this point in time. Are there any questions about the election work? Okay. So then, sorry, President Carter?
Oh, I was just going to ask one question about the election. Will we, if we have to do the in-person process again, will we continue to use the barriers?
Yes, and in fact, one of the things that the Clerk's Office has mentioned to me already is that they need more barriers, even for the, the reduced number of polling places. And it's still not clear if we'll, you know, if we'll go back to our full number of polling places, or if we'll, we'll stay at the reduced number, but even with the reduced number, we're going to need more barriers. So that's something that they're trying to figure out now, how many more, what type, so that we could start getting those produced.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. I think they were very effective. All right, so then I just briefly want to tell you some of the things going on with our state and federal efforts. And again, we could talk about this for a really long time, so I, I'll try not to overwhelm. You obviously followed the, the Supreme Court, and... and, you know, the sort of fallout from that. You've seen our response. It's a very patchy response across the state. But we are trying to share both our analysis of the legal basis for our local orders and the content of our local orders with certainly our neighboring counties and then beyond that as well. You know, we'll see if the governor and the legislature can work together to come up with a statewide plan. I'm certainly not holding my breath on that one, which is in part why our Forward Dane Plan, I think, is so important, that so that we we have some certainty and and our community has some certainty. There's not a lot of legislation happening at the State House right now. But there there has been a little action around some elections-related legislation that's being circulated. We'll see that it is, it's currently bipartisan. It would support more vote by mail. So I think generally, we think it's a good thing. And we'll see if that can get traction. The Governor's Office is, you know, rolling out the allocation of CARES Act funding to a wide range of priorities, including small businesses. We anticipate that there will be something coming on possibly rental assistance and certainly the agricultural sector. But we don't have any details of that. That's really just speculation. The state does also have a significant revenue loss projections and saying that they have spent more than $2 billion in costs associated with COVID-19 response. So they are cutting their administrative budgets 5% across their agencies. And at the same time, hiring additional staff to support particularly the Department of Workforce Development around unemployment compensation claims and the IT needs associated with that. So I think we're going to have to really keep our eyes on the state budget as we think about our '21 budget, because it's entirely possible that they will cut the aid to localities in their next budget in one way or another. We continue to advocate for good cooperation, good communication, particularly around testing, PPE, data sharing, supporting the healthcare sector, housing and homelessness issues. And with a trying to keep the state focused on some of the racial inequities that we're seeing across the state with respect to who's impacted by COVID-19. We've, I specifically asked for support from the state for the fall election. I was joined in that by four other mayors, the top five mayors from the state of Wisconsin in making that ask. And we're trying to align wherever we can our asks to the federal government. So this is constantly changing terrain, and we've been trying to keep on top of it and represent the city well. On the federal side, I don't want to go too far back because I think probably you know some of this, but the state did receive CARES Act funding, as did the county. The city has only received funding in the realms of transit, the CDVG and Emergency Services Grants, and not that much money overall. But we continue to advocate for additional federal resources coming to the city, working with the various statewide partners, for example, the Wisconsin League of Municipalities and national partners like the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the National League of Cities. We're advocating for support for testing, PPE supplies for the census, for rental and homeownership assistance, homelessness assistance, support to public health agencies and healthcare systems, for food resources and distribution, for broadband access, small business support. We've advocated for an extension of DACA for transportation resources and more. The current package, which you probably have heard about, I hope, that has been passed by the House is called the HEROES Act, stands for Health and Economic Recovery Omnibus Emergency Solutions Act, to get that nice acronym, which was introduced by Speaker Pelosi last week, passed the House on Friday, it moves to the Senate. It currently includes additional resources for small businesses, an extension of unemployment compensation through January of '21, housing assistance for renters and owners, hazard pay for essential workers, and direct federal resources, this is the important part, direct federal resources to municipalities of all sizes, in addition to county and state governments, and then additional resources for contact tracing, testing, and treatment efforts, among other things. It's been identified as a nonstarter for the Senate. And so we expect there to be a lot of negotiation in Washington about this. And it will be likely weeks before the Senate would vote on anything. But we are hopeful and we will continue to advocate for certainly all of those priorities, but particularly for resources to come directly to the city to help support the work that we've been doing, allow us to do more work and allow us to help to fill some of our budget hole. So that's a lot, but that's the sort of snapshot from the state and federal work that we've been doing. And again, happy to answer questions on any of that. I think that if any of you wanted to contact our delegation on the HEROES Act, that would certainly be not, not a bad idea. And certainly, if you wanted to, you know, put out anything publicly or on social media, if you support it, I think that that would be useful as well.
Great. I think that's a good idea, too, because we need all the help we can here in Wisconsin, and especially Madison. Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions before the mayor leaves our meeting? Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Thank you all. See you later.
Okay, bye-bye. So I am not going to spend a lot of time on the review of our charge at CCEC. I did include it in the packet. And, you know, please review it. And if you have any questions, you can contact me. But I will move on unless someone has a question now. Oh. Alder Kimball.
Yeah. Part of this, I think it's number four, is about developing a work plan, a yearly work plan for the council. So I would like for us to put that maybe on the next agenda. Or maybe that could be something we can discuss at a committee of the whole meeting of this body. But that's, we're at the beginning of a new year, of a new leadership year. So I'd like for us to not lose track of that.
Okay, thank you, Alder Kimball. And in Quazy, if you can mark that, thank you. So we're going to move on to referrals from the, oh, let me just go back. Does anyone have any disclosures or recusals? I see none. Thank you. We will move on to number, item number seven. And do I have motion so we can discuss this? With that, then, if no one want, if it's, I'm looking, okay. So with that, we're going to move on to number eight. And of course, we know that this is creating a new section to add a definition to end the terms. So is, oh, Alder Kimball, are you? Go on, Alder Kimball.
I would like to make, to move, go back to seven and
Sure.
Move approval of number seven.
Is there a second?
Hennig, second.
Hennig, you're you're on, you're unmuted.
Yep, I said second.
Okay, moved in second. Thank you. So Alder Kimball, do you want to talk to this?
Well, this was approved by the Finance Committee. It's the the budget calendar, including, you know, some innovations for this year of having more presentations at earlier on in the year, more engagement of council. I don't know, is Director Schmidiki or Laura Larson with us at this meeting to speak to it at all? I don't see them on the list.
They're not on the list. Is, um, you know, Alder Furman, you were at that meeting. Can you discuss this? And Alder McKinney was also at that meeting. I don't know if she's, she's on yet. I can tell you that the the different things that came up that I thought was prudent for us is because we tend to always go to past midnight. So for the first two nights, we will, we will hold those meetings until midnight and then as a cutoff time. And then on the third night, we do not have a cutoff time. But I do think we need to have more and more time to really discuss the budget. So this is one of the things that's in there. So I think that this is a voting item. So if we, we've been moved in second, it, we did have the discussion. So all in favor of this item. I was not the sponsor of this item, so I can't really tell you anymore about it. The other people that were on the Finance Committee are not talking. So all in favor of this. If I don't see any hands up, I'm assuming that I can record it as a unanimous vote. And there are no hands up. Thank you, Alder Kimball, for going back to that. And we will go on to section eight. Excuse me, number eight, 60222. And this is creating a new section to add a definition of end of term for elected officials. Can I get a motion and a second on that? Alder Kimball again.
Move approval.
Alder Hennig, hold on.
Second.
There you go. Thank you. So this. Thank you. So who wants to lead the discussion on this one? Is Mike Vavir on the line? He is. Alder Vavir.
Thank you, President Carter. Good afternoon, colleagues. I, I think this is a very self-explanatory ordinance amendment. It has the sad distinction of being the final ordinance amendment drafted by our soon-to-depart longtime city attorney. And it was actually Attorney May who made this catch in the midst of the chaos regarding the April-Spring election. As you all recall, we had the possibility of having a delayed election, and that would have resulted potentially in the fact that the constituents residing in the 8th Alder Manic District would be left unrepresented for a period of time on our common council. So obviously, that did not happen. And an Alder person pressed to Giacomo was able to be seated on a timely basis after being duly elected by his constituents. So this is a, frankly, I think, a technical amendment to our ordinances that that likely we will never have to use, but never say never. None of us thought we'd be in this situation of this horrific pandemic either. So I want to thank Mike for his assistance with this one. And and here, I would be happy to answer any questions. But again, I presume it's pretty self-explanatory and just a technical correction to our ordinances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Alder Zach? Your hand is up?
Sorry, that was from Hennig.
Okay. And do we have any other questions for Alder Vavir or for Attorney May? If not, then
Just to say, thanks. Thank you for catching it.
Okay. So great. So it's been moved in properly second, all in favor. Any oppose? Then I will record this as a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, everyone. And we are going to go to number nine. And this is ordinance change, the timing of the Common Council Executive Committee appointments and clarifying such appointments are subject to council confirmation. And do I get a motion in a second?
Don't move.
In a second, Alder Abbas.
Second.
Thank you. And is Marsha Rummel on the line to to discuss this?
It looks like she's here, but her video and audio is off.
Roughly, I will, I can say that this is an ordinance that really clarifies that the end of the current executive committee members ends at the annual meeting. And as the president is elected, then the new members, once they're selected, will be the CCE members without extending the previous members. That's how I understand it, is now I don't see Marsha at all.
I see Alder Rummel is on. Her video is on.
Alder Rummel, you are unmuted.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I was
On their shoes.
So I I've organized this, this ordinance, just to codify what we do. I missed what you said before, so I was on the phone. So I know that I heard different conversations about should we allow the president to appoint right away? Or should we keep it that the way it is? So I really just was, my initiative was to to codify, make the ordinance reflect what we really do. And if we want to change what we do, I'm certainly open to hearing the conversation. The thing that strikes me about the way we do it is it takes a month to turn around from when leadership gets elected to the next CCEC meeting. Now, certainly, I mean, assuming we're, and assuming we're going to appoint them to the council, that then I don't really know. Does that mean we can't meet? Or I'm not sure that, you know, how that works through. Anyway, so thanks. I'm happy to hear what people have to say.
Well, and and I will Well, and I will get to everyone in just two seconds. So one of the things that I think is unique this year was the fact that we had to see what dates were available to even meet, not having the foresight prior to, prior to the election, to setting up some meetings far enough in advance, so we had to wait until we had a free night to really meet. I am going to go with, and that's just short comments, Alder Foster, your comment.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess maybe a question first to Attorney May. You know, President Carter, you mentioned that this would clarify that the terms of the previous members end at the election, but I guess that's not my understanding of this, these updates. I believe via current ordinance, people would stay in their position until new appointments are made. I don't think that really changes with this ordinance amendment, but rather, this really clarifies that the appointments are made as soon as practicable, practicable after the annual organizational meeting, rather than at, which is what it states currently, and also that the appointments are submitted for confirmation by the Common Council, which currently in ordinance, it doesn't require that, even though that has been our practice. I guess maybe Attorney May, could you just weigh in on what this amendment does and does not do?
Sure. I think, first of all, the proposed ordinance amendment, which is in front of you, does the two things that Alder Rummel talked about, and that you mentioned, Alder Foster. It makes it clear that the appointments to the CCC are submitted to the council for approval. I know they've gone on the council agenda, I'm not sure whether that was for information or approval in the past, but this is to clarify that they will be approved, appointments made by the council president and confirmed by the council. Second, that the president makes those appointments as soon as the president can do it after the organizational meeting, almost impossible to do it at the meeting, because you don't know who the president is, until you get to that meeting and actually take a vote. So those two changes simply bring it in line with current practice. The item that Alder Carter was talking about, President Carter was talking about, was an amendment I drafted at her request, and I don't know if it's in front of you yet or not, which was to add an additional sentence to the effect that the terms do end at the time of the organizational meeting. And that would also clarify that there simply is no CCEC between the organizational meeting and when the new CCEC is confirmed. And it's an interesting issue, because when you have an election, as a matter of law, the term ends at the election, you know, at the organizational meeting, because all Aldermanic terms end at the election and have to be reappointed. So one out of the two years, this would happen anyways, and the question is, during the other year, like this year, do you want there to be a period where you have a CCEC that would consist of the new council president, and the past president, and the old members of the CCEC, or do you not want to have there be really any functioning committee for a couple of weeks until the next meeting? So I don't know, Alder Carter, whether you got someone to offer your amendment or not, but that, that was, I think she was talking about a possible amendment to this ordinance amendment that is in front of you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I guess I would just share my thoughts on it, if that's okay, President Carter?
Sure.
So, I mean, I think the update to saying as soon as practicable rather than at makes a lot of sense, as you said, Attorney May, it's, I think it's, would be very challenging to do that at the meeting itself, so I think that one makes a lot of sense. In terms of adding the statement that these appointments require council confirmation, I think on the one hand, it's, I mean, generally, I think it's good for, you know, most things that are at hand to go in front of the full council, I think that's just a sort of standard practice. I think someone mentioned the, you know, the practical impact of that, particularly since CCC typically meets just before the common council meeting. I think Alder Rummel mentioned this, it's sort of in effect of this, is that there's, you know, often a full month of no CCC meeting, you know, following the organizational meeting, and I guess I'm not, I think that there would be value in allowing the CCEC to meet sooner. And in terms of the value of council confirming these appointments, I guess of all of the appointments, I mean, I think there's a lot of value when it's mayoral appointments, you know, bringing the council in for confirmation, for sure. But in terms of, you know, the council electing a president who has the authority to do the appointments, I'm not sure what additional value confirming the appointments really does, since at least 11 members of the council just chose someone, and the idea that, you know, their first action of appointing members to CCC would somehow, you know, need review and approval from the council, just, I guess I'm not quite sold on what that's actually going to get us. I doubt it's rarely, if ever, would be challenged anyways, and so it seems like it just sort of puts a roadblock to CCC meeting, whereas if we perhaps just made the first change, that as soon as practicable, you know, it gives the president several days to gauge interest, you know, make a selection, and then could potentially hold a CCC meeting a week after the organizational meeting, or at least, you know, before the next common council meeting, which would be the sort of the typical schedule, whereas if it requires confirmation, again, we're just sort of, you know, we're sort of making it so CCC can't meet for a longer period of time. So I guess those are my comments, and in terms of the amendment that I guess I didn't know about, but I don't think it really matters much either way, if the, you know, if the terms technically continue until new appointments are made, you know, either the president's going to make those appointments and the membership's going to change, or, you know, leaving it as is just simply gives the option to hold a CCEC meeting with the previous members, so I guess I don't really have sense on that amendment, but I'm not sure if it does much either way. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Abbas?
Yep, thank you. I will, I will do that amendment, which was just, we mentioned, between Attorney May and President Carter. I would like to do amendment and add the following sentence at the end of the section 33.13, Part 1, and the words are, "The terms of all members of the CCEC end at the annual organizational meeting of the council and are not subject to the extensions provided in section 330160 MGO."
And do I have a second? I can send that out to everyone. Alder Abbas, can you take over, why switch over to my email to send that out?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can we have a second, please? All right. I do not have, I'm not a co-host, so I cannot unmute, so can somebody unmute?
Let me grab that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Should be able to unmute now.
Yep, there we go. Unmute. Huh. I'm pressing unmute, it won't allow me to do that. Can you please un, oh, here we go.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just Teknne.
Perfect. Any discussion, question on the amendment, please? I can see Alder Ball Day and Alder Foster hands are up.
Mine's just a little up from before, if you could lower that and unmute.
Sure.
You can lower mine as well.
All right. Any other question, discussion on the amendment, please? Raise your hand. No further discussion. Motion unanimously approval, unless if somebody wants to raise hand, then we can go on a roll call. All right, motion approved unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, and I just sent that out to everyone, it's just on, just a word document. Well, that brings us to the end of our CCEC, I can't believe we did it in an hour. So if you have items that you want to discuss for next time, please send that to me. And, oh, I'm sorry. I almost called you Attorney Kimball. Alder Kimball?
Oh, we need to vote on the main motion.
Thank you. So, okay, all in favor of the main motion? If I don't, I don't see any rate, any objection, so I'm going to record that as a unanimous vote on the main motion. Thank you. And then, um, thank you, Alder Kimball, I got it right this time. Attorney May? I'm looking for you, Attorney May.
I'm here.
Here you are, there you are. You're up.
I'm up, I only, I raised my hand only because you hadn't voted on the main motion.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you for that.
Any, any further, it's my last CCEC meetings, but I'll save my goodbyes till tonight at the council meeting.
Okay, bittersweet meeting then, if this is your, your last CCE meeting, do I have a motion for adjournment? Zach? Alder Zach? Oh, for God's sake. You're unmuted.
I'm sorry, I must have said it beforehand, I just said, don't move.
Do I have a second? Alder Skidmore?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? I see no hands for opposition, so I will say the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.